City Council meeting and if everybody will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Go call. I guess we have to move. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Okay, Suze? Yeah, sure. Sorry. Okay, I'll do that. Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Keith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember LaBarre.
Here.
Councilmember Sonier.
Here.
And Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you.
And thanks very much. For everybody's information, I see a lot of people here, I'm just turning on my agenda to Agenda Item Number 9B. 9B will be tabled until the September 19th meeting. So if you're here for 9B, we encourage you to stay if you like, but we will not be speaking about that appeal today. Okay, we will move on to ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And Suzanne, I'll let you take the first one.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Council, we have an appointment before us this evening for a member of the Board of Adjustment. It's an alternate member, there's one opening for it. And we received an application which is before you this evening from Ms. Nakai, Catherine Nakai, who's in the audience with us this evening and available for any questions if you'd like to speak with her.
Great, thank you. Ms. Nakai, would you like to come forward, introduce yourself, and give us your name and address to start?
Catherine Nakai, 225 Morning Sun Court, Woodland Park.
Give us a couple of seconds on why you're here today.
I saw on the website that there was a opening for the alternate position and I decided that I would like to volunteer my time and help our community.
Sounds good. Council, do we have questions? This is a position as an alternate on the Board of Adjustments.
Have you attended any Board of Adjustments meetings?
I did, I did attend the last one.
And you still want to be on?
And I still want to be, yeah.
Wow, okay. So you're familiar with the issues that are going on?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for...
Mr. Mayor, I was just curious if there's a background that you have or motivations or what brings you to us tonight?
I've lived here for 17 years, I've commented on various topics in town and I've just, I've talked to Sally and the more I stay here, the more I want to be involved.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was on the Board of Adjustment for nine years and Chair for some of that. And it's a very interesting board to sit on. You learn a lot about certain sections of the city code. Most of it's mundane, but it's always interesting to the parties that are in front of you. And so we always pay attention and do a good job with that. Rarely do we get anything controversial there, except recently, of course, I guess.
Correct.
I hear, I hear. But as usual, I welcome all the volunteer service we can get in here and hopefully you won't be too... We'll stay awake during some of the meetings, most of them, all of them. And the issues will become, over time, interesting to you because of the transition, because each meeting is different than the last one, just because you decided this way that time, the next time you won't necessarily decide that way. So always keep that in mind, they're individual issues, always. And I appreciate your coming forward, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, there's nobody else. And this is motion, alternate on the Board of Adjustments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask the clerk, on the last sentence of the background, it says that the term will expire January 2017?
2021 is on your staff report, where do you see that ma'am? I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Now you do. Yeah, go ahead, though.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
Where are we at with members on Board of Adjustment? I mean, how many?
I need to confirm with Sally, but I believe this would be a full board now.
Which is? Numbers?
Seven.
Five, five regular members.
So this would be the last alternate position? Okay, thank you.
It should be a full board.
Let's have one last question for you, Ms. Nakai. Should I be concerned that you're leaning one way or the other on the issue that you saw at the last Board of Adjustment meeting?
No. I actually, I didn't necessarily lean either way, to be honest, in that when I went to the BOA.
That being honest is really, really important on Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, yeah.
Honest and fair.
Correct.
And so I appreciate that answer, thank you. We had a call for a motion, I haven't got one yet.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any other questions? Suze?
Carr?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Would you like to swear her in?
Yes.
They left.
[applause] [inaudible] 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 [applause] [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
You get the book. Ms. Nakai, we really appreciate your willingness to serve and, you know, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 2B. And is Carolyn Best with us? There she is. If you'd like to come forward, thank you very much. Give us your name and address to start, that'd be great.
My name is Allison Schuch, S-C-H-U-C-H. I am the Watershed Outreach Coordinator for the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District and the Creek Week Director. My address is 2635 Christopher Terrace, that's in Colorado Springs, 80907.
That's it? Tell us a little bit about Creek Week.
All right, well, if you have not heard of it, Creek Week is the largest cleanup event in the state of Colorado. We work with nine jurisdictions, all part of the Fountain Creek Watershed. We have seen 350% growth in volunteer participation over the last five years. We have fantastic support from businesses, from organizations, nonprofits, all of our governments. There's really no reason not to participate in Creek Week because it's a week-long event, nine full days. So if the weather's bad, you can go out the next day. If your kiddo has a soccer game, go out the day after that. Here in Woodland Park, you're actually getting a jump start on things. The kickoff event for Woodland Park here, the cleanup day is Friday, September 27th. We're going to be cleaning behind the Walmart, which is where a lot of trash is generated, kind of from those windy days, that ends up in the creek there. And that is actually the headwaters area of Fountain Creek. So Fountain Creek starts right up here in Woodland Park, you truly are the headwaters up here. So that is going to be facilitated by the Catamount Institute, who's working very closely with the students here in Woodland Park to develop them as environmental stewards. And so they're taking on the Creek Week cleanup as their initiative, inviting the youth to participate, not only behind the Walmart, but they're also going to go out to Manitou Lake, so they'll have an opportunity to do some water quality testing and things like that. So very proud of the program, really great to have the support from everyone all the way up here. As I was driving up, it was raining and I thought, ooh, what's coming down in that stormwater, you know? This is the top of the watershed and it all goes downhill from here. So very excited for the sixth annual Creek Week cleanup. Right now, we are at 100 different events that I'm coordinating, from Palmer Lake to Pueblo, we've got Trinidad involved this year, so it's actually expanding into the greater Arkansas Basin.
That's great, you say you have a 350% increase. What's the real number for volunteers last year?
Last year, we almost reached 2,800 volunteers.
Wow.
And the value that the volunteers bring, cleaning up our waterways, beautifying our neighborhoods, making things safer and cleaner for all citizens, equates to nearly a half a million dollars in just five years. So it's really easy to participate, most cleanups only take an hour or two. If that Friday date up here doesn't work for you, we'd be happy to help set up another cleanup on another date and time that works for any of you. We provide the bags, we provide gloves, we provide safety information, a very comprehensive, easy-to-do program.
Ms. Best, could you clarify the time?
Um, yeah. Let me see. I actually have packets for you all, so I can pass these around. We have great information about the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District. They have been around for 10 years, performing a lot of stabilization of the creek banks because of all the stormwater infrastructure issues we're having in the region. I'm the Public Events Coordinator. So that's Friday, September 2nd, 9:30 a.m. And so I know that's on a Friday during the workday, but again, we will invite anyone to participate at any time or location that works for your schedule.
Okay.
27th, yes, Friday, the 27th. Creek Week actually kicks off on the 28th, but this was the date that worked for this particular crew leader. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Sounds good. Council, any other questions?
So say I want to participate, do I call this number? Do I show up at a certain place?
Yeah, if you'd like to participate, we're asking folks to contact the people on this public event listing, those are the crew leaders. So folks who are in the audience, we have FountainCreekWeek.com, has a list of all the public events. You can go on there and see which date and time work out for you, and then you contact that crew leader directly. They're responsible for providing the materials that we'll hand out, they'll give the safety briefings, they'll report out afterwards, send us all those fun group photos that we like to create into a big report at the end.
Council, with desire, I can collect all those RSPs and make one reservation for all of us if you'd like. Thank you, Suzanne.
Yeah, that would be great. So six years running, I'm sure the first year was a lot of pickup, and every year since it's gotten less and less and less.
That's the idea. The idea is to put Creek Week out of business and have people be a little bit more responsible about tying and bagging their trash on those windy days, just about spreading the message about litter management throughout our region and really the state and, you know, the larger picture, is we don't have a big statewide message about, don't mess with Texas. You know, they've got anti-littering signs up and down their highways, and that's something that we'd love to see here as a state in Colorado, is we invite our tourists, business development, et cetera. So we have seen in certain areas, a lot of the historic trash is gone. So the big stuff that's been just stuck there for years and years, that's going away. We've seen a 50% increase in our adopt a waterway and adopt a park programs, and so people are saying, once a year isn't enough for me. Allison, why don't you do Creek Week more than once a year? Because I will go crazy. So we invite people to adopt a waterway and go out there as often as they like to.
That's great, because I used to run up and down that and I'd see a lot of shopping carts.
Oh, yes, yes.
I don't know how they got there, but I'd see shopping carts.
And a lot of those businesses are putting in the locking mechanisms now, so they can't physically leave the location, but that's an investment that that business has to make.
Anybody else? Suze, do I need a consensus? Should I read the proclamation? What should I do?
It would be an honor if you would read it.
Well, I'd be glad to. I'll be glad to. This is the proclamation recognizing Creek Week 2019, whereas, the city of Woodland Park is fortunate to have extensive and diverse natural resources, such as forests, grasslands, riparian areas, lakes, creeks, and a wide variety of open spaces. And whereas the Fountain Creek Watershed, including Fountain Creek, related wetlands, existing trails, and recreational facilities, is a unique watershed that is an important resource and asset to residents and visitors of Fountain and the Pikes Peak Region. And whereas the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District is partnering with the city of Colorado Springs, Colorado Springs Utilities, El Paso County, Pueblo County, the cities of Manitou Springs, Fountain, and towns of Monument and Green Mountain Falls, along with numerous community organizations, to coordinate the sixth annual Creek Week cleanup, which will encourage the protection, restoration, and maintenance of the Fountain Creek Watershed. And whereas this nine-day litter cleanup effort kicks off in Fountain Creek Regional Park on September 28th and runs through October 6, 2019, throughout the watershed. And whereas Creek Week programs and activities are designed to raise awareness about the littering issue within our watershed, to encourage organizations and individuals to collect litter and debris, to make Fountain Creek and the watershed cleaner and safer. And whereas businesses, churches, schools, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, youth groups, service clubs, and individuals are encouraged to form a Creek Crew to clean up at a Creek Week project site. And whereas Creek Week litter removal activities will reduce pollution in our creeks and clogs in our waterways that can lead to flooding, provide for a safer drinking water supply, and enhance wildlife habitat and property values. Now therefore, the council members of the city of Woodland Park hereby proclaim the September 28th through October 6, 2019, as Creek Week in Woodland Park, and encourages our citizens to help protect, restore, and maintain our waterways by participating in Creek Week activities done this fifth day of September 2019 in Woodland Park, Colorado. Ms. Best, thank you very much for all your work, and 2,800 volunteers is exemplary at the very, very least, so thank you very much.
Well, that's one thing our citizens are great at doing, is rolling up their sleeves and putting in the time and effort where it's needed, and we've seen that with the growth of the program. I did want to mention also that we have had steadfast support from the Teller Park Conservation District, so they are also helping to organize that event and provide some materials, so appreciate that support.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last item under ceremonies, presentations, is the Main Street presentation. Lynn Jones, and step.
I think so. Which, at five? Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of staff. I'm Lynn Jones, I live at 260 Morning Sun Drive, and I own a business at 110 West Midland Avenue.
And I am Stephanie Alfieri at 361 West Highway 24. So we are here tonight to present some financial information for Main Street. We're also here to ask for our funding for 2020, and we are asking that you maintain the current level of funding at $15,000. Over the next few slides, we will show you why that really is the minimum we need to operate as a Main Street program. So before I talk numbers, we thought it was important to recap the history of Main Street and how it came about. It's something that a lot of people don't know. In 2014, Councilmember Gary Bravato and Sally Riley attended a seminar focused around historic preservation, and there was a presentation on the National Main Street Program. They found it interesting enough, thank you, to bring it back to the city, who also liked it enough to create the initiative with the Historic Preservation Committee to take the local Main Street program forward. It was originally housed in the Office of Economic Development, Office, Economic Development Office, and then later under the Special Projects Department. And with that initiative came a call from the, to the citizens, to serve on the Main Street organization as well. So getting into the numbers, first, we wanted to talk about the grants that we've received this year. Some of these are specific to Main Street, some of them are community-wide grants. I think most of us are familiar with the Community Builders Grant and the ODT mini-grants that came along with it, the market analysis that was presented earlier this year. And then those last ones are DOLA grants specific to our Main Street for strategic planning during our board retreat, as well as $2,500 that they give to us to attend National Main Street Conference, and some other DOLA-sponsored conferences. So moving on to our sources of income. You're all aware that we get currently $15,000 from the city. We also get $5,000 of mini-grants from DOLA. The DOLA dollars, it's important to note, those are project dollars only, they can't be used for administrative expenses. We have just over $3,000 of public support and donations. Those are for things like member contributions for supplies and event fees, and a big portion of that is our office space, which is donated by Lee and Karen Taylor at the Woodland Professional Building. That's just over $2,200 a year of office space that they donate to us. And then last, a source of income is fundraising. This is something new for us this year, we haven't done it before, and we're quite proud of the success so far for the year. It's resulted in about $2,400 of additional income to us, and as far as the specifics for that fundraiser, I'll turn it over to Lynn, and she's going to talk about that a little more.
So we had Shop Small Summer Edition, and this was a direct offshoot from the success of the Shop Small Saturday last November, and that was a tremendous collaboration between Main Street, The Chamber, and local businesses. And what came out of that were requests, some from you, to let's do that some more, let's have that kind of a day for our businesses and our community. Knowing that we had to do a fundraiser, we rolled that into a Shop Small Summer Edition, and it was focused on the July 4th weekend primarily. So we solicited logo sponsors, coupon sponsors, we had bags printed. Inside the bags were lots of promotional items to our local businesses. We had 100 bags printed, we sold 98. Two were donated, one to DOLA and one to the Chamber Business After Hours as a door prize. So we, the proceeds were approximately $1,900 for that, and we sold most of the bags July 4th. We did sell a few at the Vino and Notes as well. We had tents for Main Street at Memorial Park on July 4th, as well as one in front of Colorado Gear Lab on the plaza there.
So the next is expenses. Top there is salary, $11,300. This is slightly off from what we contract. Our contract for our program manager is actually $10,800, but in January, we were transitioning from one program manager to another, so that was an additional $500 of salary, the expenses, while we paid both to transition that position. Then you have operations. This is going to be everything from, of course, office supplies, admin expenses, certain dues that we pay to the National Main Street Secretary of State, and a big portion of this is our insurance coverage for our directors and officers' coverage, as well as our rental policy for the office space that's donated to us. Projects, the majority of this is the mini-grant that comes from DOLA that has to go back out for projects. This year, we earmarked for projects repairing the mural that's on the side of the Cultural Center. It had received some sort of damage from water and a damaged gutter. We had helped contribute to make that happen to begin with, so of course, we felt our responsibility to make sure we keep up with the projects that we're putting money towards. We also purchased an event tent, which goes along with our marketing and promotions and messaging, that's more Main Street-focused. We are going to be purchasing pole banners. Those are what go on the lamppost that line Main Street. There's kind of a gaffe in seasons where we don't really have specific pole banners up for any events, so that's something Main Street's looking at, to be able to purchase some of those for the city to put up on the lamppost. And then some of it went to the DDA sculpture as well, since it's a great piece of art in downtown Woodland Park. The additional funds above and beyond the money we got from DOLA, that was a little bit that we had to spend on those bunting that line Main Street during 4th of July. Some of them were getting a little worn, so we needed to update those, so that was additional money that we put towards projects. And then lastly, it would be nice if we could raise money without spending money, but of course, we do have to spend some money on promotions and fundraising to make up that money. So that goes to things like the cost of the bags that Lynn just talked about. Also, we dues for Colorado Springs Visitors Bureau and The Chamber, who we market and advertise with, as well as some ads that we do in the newspapers for the Shop Small Editions and Saturdays. So at this point, I know there's a few of you that are going, okay, expenses don't match income. The reason for that is because when we did our expenses for the year, that was based on our budget at the beginning of the year. What wasn't included was the idea to fundraise. It's a difference of $1,900, and that's exactly the proceeds that we had from our fundraising efforts that we didn't include at the beginning of the year in the budget. So that concludes the numbers, but I will pass it over to Lynn to talk a little bit about what's next for Main Street.
Do you notice how the banker got all the number slides? It's really great. Okay, so what's ahead? So Shop Small Saturday, November 30th is coming up. You're also going to see some Shop Small Sidewalk Saturdays coming up in 2020 that we will help organize for the community as well. So looking forward to Shop Small Saturday. Lighter Side of Christmas, we are actually the beneficiary of that event, and we anticipate receiving anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000 in proceeds. We are the understudy this year with the Parade Committee, looking at the potential of taking on that event as an organization, but that decision will be made collectively between the organizations. Are we the right ones to take it on? Does it make sense? But we're very excited to be working with that committee and learning from them and participating on that event this year. And then, we have graduate status on here. This is just to say it's on the radar, where it does designate level status right now. Graduate, as a Main Street organization, allows us to secure more in mini-grant funding. We would go from a level of $5,000 to $10,000. There are more requirements, we need to have a five-year strategic plan. As a board, we have not made any decisions at this point as to when and how we would pursue that, but it's on our radar. We don't want to stagnate as an organization, so definitely something to look at. But really, what we want to focus in the forefront is continuing on with the placemaking grant and what it takes to work with our key partners, organizations, businesses, to implement the steps that are identified in that. So we're thrilled to be a part of that and moving forward. So that concludes our presentation for our ask, and just to remind you that we are asking for your support in the same amount that we received in 2019, and that would be for $15,000 for 2020. So thank you very much.
Sit tight, maybe we might have a question or two for you. We'll see. Anybody? Paul, you want to start?
Yep. For you.
Yeah, I'm liaison for Main Street. Keeping it at $15,000, I pray and wish you the best of luck. I thought you would ask for more to ease the burden that you've struggled through this year, but again, fundraising is a new addition, plus the Lighter Side of Christmas. Graduate, very important step, new strategical planning, you need financing for that. So I do wish you the very best. You've done a lot, and the volunteers have been hours. You've done a lot, and the volunteers have been the hours, what you've done inside the city, helping with all the different things, from cleaning to painting to historical preservation, to, God knows, the whole area with the bureaus and everything else. Shop Small was a great success. I appreciate everything that everyone on the Main Street is doing. I hope the $15,000 is sufficient enough, and that the Lighter Side of Christmas brings a good return, but I'm looking ahead in order to create your strategical plan to move forward into a graduate, which I highly encourage you to do. I encourage the city to support that. And this council, I can say thank you very much for everything that you've done, very good presentation.
Well, we all thank you. And on that, if I might mention as well, the fundraising efforts are really to raise additional project dollars, because I know that can be a question. If you're raising all this money through fundraising, what do you need additional funding for? We don't want to be an organization that exists to fundraise just to pay administrative expenses. The fundraising dollars, we really do have earmarked so that we're able to put more money into the projects and into the downtown area whenever, and there's plenty of projects, we're not lacking for projects, that need funds. So, that's where all these fundraising efforts, that money is going, towards additional project dollars.
That's important. When people hear, they hear, your monies do go to projects inside the city to make it better for economic development, to make it more beautiful, and just to bring pleasure to the community. Very important. I am done.
Anybody else? No? Got something for us? Anyone else? I have a question for you.
Yes.
Main Street represents a small number of businesses in town. Here's the question I get. Why are you going to give them $15,000 and you give us nothing? And I know what you're going to say, what we do helps the entire community, and I buy into that. But you see where there's a fine line there. We're giving $15,000 to a small number of businesses in town, and there's a number that is many multiples of that number of businesses that gets nothing. That's kind of the quandary that I'm in. Help me out.
So, it's not just the Main Street district that we promote. Currently, our Main Street district runs from Maple Street to, don't quote me on this, down near the Dinosaur Resource Center. But there are plenty of things that come up, businesses promoting themselves, events that are outside of that. Gail, who manages our Facebook page and our website, regularly promote things that are out of the district. Again, not only events, but businesses. So, even though that is our main footprint, we don't limit it to just that. And I'm not aware of a time where we've simply told a business, "No, we can't help you promote something because of the fact that you're not within our footprint."
So, specifically for Shop Small, last year in November, we made a strong effort to go outside the Main Street district. And so, we went down, you know, by Walmart and Safeway on both sides of 24 and out 67, and to encourage businesses at no cost to participate in Shop Small, give us their specials. They were included on a map, a list. So, we were trying to be very intentional to make it more of a community-wide attempt and benefit.
That's a great answer. Thank you. Anybody else?
If I can, I think I'd just like to add, I know last year, there was a discussion about how collaborative was Main Street with a lot of our other organizations. And there was concerns at that time. I think, I mean, you look now, and I think there is, I think there's kind of, that has been fixed, and I think that there's a lot of collaboration between Main Street, the DDA, The Chamber. Look at that, you got Deb and Lori sitting right next to each other in the back right there. So, it's, you know, it's great to see, I get to sit in their meetings each month, and it's great to see how collaborative and how much outreach they're doing now. So, I just want to make that comment.
Thank you.
I guess I should say something. Just full disclosure, I'm actually a citizen member of that group and not, I don't wear my city council hat there. So, I've applied to that board. They graciously accepted me, so one can defer my support by that. And, but I'm in a confused situation here, help, as far as, we don't have a vote in front of us today, so that's good, but I do want to say that I do sit on the Main Street Board as a private citizen, just full disclosure. Thank you.
Also, the grants that they bring in, economic development stuff, grants to help restore the roof on the depot. Main Street does a lot, and I've never known them to not give over their volunteers to help a Fourth of July, Oktoberfest, Symphony Above the Clouds, Christmas Day Parade. They're always there. They're always pitching in. They are a wonderful resource to this community, and the people who volunteer are from this community, care about this community, and put a lot of effort into it. I dare say the city would not look the way it looks today if it were not for Main Street, their volunteers and their coordinated efforts would keep Woodland Park beautiful, the DDA, Chamber Commerce, and anyone else, Historical Society. They do a lot. I see it. I hear it. I see them struggling. I see them, I see their successes. I see their smiles. I see the hard work they put into it. Without Main Street, Woodland Park ain't the same. I see a lot of benefits to them.
I just would like to compliment you. I see good work done by your organization and all of your volunteers. I would like to commend you on your success in an alternative source of funding through the Christmas Parade. That's awesome. And I think you guys stepped up to the challenge that was presented to you, I think, last year, if I'm not mistaken. So, good job, and I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that this is not up to a vote tonight, but I just had a question on the back page of the, yeah, the financial statement. I'm a result of the public education system. Part-time manager, actual $7,700, and then budgeted $11,300. Could you explain that to me again?
Yes. So, the contract that we have with our current program manager is for an annual amount of $10,800. It's $900 per month. So, that's where you get the $7,700, because these are only through the end of August. Actually, I think it's September 4th. So, it's her pay through the end of August. The difference then there between the $10,800 that we pay her and the $11,300 that you see is because in January, we switched over program managers, and there was that one month where the new program manager was training and the old program manager was training her, and we agreed to continue to pay the old program manager $500 for that month while they both served in that role, and the new program manager learned the ropes of it.
So, in your request to the city for $15,000, which is more than we gave you last year, I believe, no, was it the same amount? How much of that were you going to dedicate to the program manager's salary?
Well, we have not discussed budget yet. It's not sure which one comes first at this point, the cart or the horse, because we have to know how much we're getting, but I know you guys would like to see a budget. We don't expect it to change much from last year, and last year, it was the $10,800.
Thanks, Steph. I'd just like to make one more comment about the revenue that you're going to receive from the Lighter Side of Christmas Parade. I would hope that you would follow a conservative approach and put that, some of that in savings so that you have a little bit of a buffer. I'm a big proponent of that, as you guys all know. But it would be just an opportunity for you guys to create some reserve that might help you going forward. Thank you.
So, a fun little fact about Main Street. It is five years old. I remember the exact council meeting that Gary Bravetto actually proposed Main Street, and it went something like this. He had a piece of paper, he had $10,000 on it like this, and he looks over at the city manager and he goes, "I need $10,000 to start Main Street." And the city manager looks at him and goes, "For what? Main Street? What is that?" "Well, that's an organization that's going to help promote our town. Well, why don't you do a proper proposal, Councilman Bravetto?" And he looks at the $10,000 and goes, "Okay." So, here we are, five years later. Main Street, Woodland Park Main Street's still in its infancy. I think every year, you guys get better, you get stronger, you get smarter. $15,000 is not much to work with, especially when you have a salary. I truly believe there is a good return on investment. I believe what they do brings in more than $15,000 in revenue to the city. So, I do support $15,000. I think you put it to good use, and Main Street is definitely needed in our community.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll just say this, as you well know, I've been one of your biggest detractors. I never saw a return on investment, especially for the $35,000 that we were giving you. And in terms of value, I still don't know. Here's what I know for sure. The leadership that the two of you have provided have made all the difference. And so, that's the thing that's going to get me on board. And just to some of the things that were alluded to, people working together for the first time that have been here for a long time is something that starts at the top. So, congratulations in that regard, and I think you've got full support of this council. So, thanks for all your hard work.
Well, thank you. You know I can't step away without humbly saying it is not us. We have a chair, Lori Glot, who has done a phenomenal job, a treasure that, God knows, I couldn't take any more numbers in my life, so she stepped up. So, yeah, it's, we have a phenomenal board. We've worked really hard to get there, so it's all them.
That's the great leadership I'm talking about. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, council, I don't believe we have any additions, deletions, or corrections. Move on to the consent calendar, and Suze, you want to take this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Lee. This evening, on tonight's consent calendar, we have two sets of minutes. One is from the August 15 regular city council meeting, and the second set is from the August 22 special city council meeting. And we also have the approval of precast fiber IGA.
Which we discussed today in our work session. Any questions, council? You want to pull anything off to discuss? If not, I'll just ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved. In a second. Suzanne?
Keith?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBar?
Yes.
Yes.
Sohniar?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suze. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item number five. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Some of you folks have signed up for agenda item 9B, and if you weren't here when the meeting started, that's going to be put off to September 19th. That does not preclude you from coming and speaking today before that event. And so, we'll start with the people on the list, and then if anyone didn't get a chance to sign up and would like to speak, we'll get to you afterwards. First on my list is Paul Neal. Come right on up, and we'll talk. No one's ever reclaimed their topic before.
I don't know the procedure, but we'll work through it. My name is Paul Neal. I go by Rusty. I live at 1470 Masters Drive. My time I had signed up for was 9B. I didn't know it was going to be presented. I was a placeholder. Didn't know the presentation that was going to be made, and there was no public comment. It was nice to hear the support. I'd like to talk about 2C as a citizen. I had no idea. I kind of recognized Lynn when I came in here, but I didn't know why. She looked familiar. I was shopping in the Gear Lab just on Monday, and I participated in the Moose's Loose when we first got here. And I just want you to know, my wife and I are new to the community. We're getting to be a little older here. We got here in November. But the thing that struck us about Woodland Park was Main Street. I mean, when you come in as a citizen looking for a place to live, and you've got the world at your choice, that little section of town really stands out for those of you who've been here for years and years and years, and you kind of don't know what your identity is because you've seen it kind of grow. To the newbies, that is your identity. That little Main Street section represents Woodland Park far more than you can imagine. And it kind of pulls people out to shop, especially that Moose's Loose where they donated gifts. They had to cover that themselves. As a citizen, I want to let the council know that I think there's a lot of citizens that would support the funding decisions that you have coming up. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Chuck Gallagher. And just to be respectful, everyone gets three minutes.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Counsel. I apologize for bringing the...
Excuse me, Chuck. Just give us your name and address to start, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Chuck Gallagher, 1125 Pine Ridge Road, Woodland Park. I apologize for bringing the lightning bolt that seems to be hitting the city right now at the Village of Tamarack. I just want to address a couple of minutes about the concern. I attended the emergency session that was brought forward last week or this week, I'm not sure where it was. And in full disclosure, I am speaking tonight as a citizen, but I am in a group that is opposed to the Village of Tamarack. So, full disclosure, to be straightforward and honest with us. But when I came, when I did arrive late to the meeting, the emergency meeting that was brought forward by the city council and the city attorney and the city manager to bring that moratorium to stop the development. So, I missed the recusal process at the beginning. But I was, as a citizen, I was disappointed that Ms. LeBar was allowed to comment and speak and vote on that issue. Whether or not you went through a recusal process or not, I do not know. I assume you did, and I assume that Ms. LeBar elected not to recuse herself. I don't know Ms. LeBar, nor does she know me, and I'm not talking about her personally, and I'm sure you're not talking about me. We're looking at, I think, Mr. Mayor and the council, of what is the best for the city. And I looked online today for about an hour and a half trying to find the Woodland Park Code of Ethics, and I couldn't find it. That was my failure, not the city's. I found a lot of businesses in Woodland Park Code of Ethics, but I couldn't find our cities. But I did find the state of Colorado's, and if I could, I would just, and again, this is not meant to be disrespectful to anyone on this board or this panel or the city. Mr. Mayor, council, I know you know this code, and you follow it, and you believe it in your heart, but for the people in the audience, I would just like to bring it to your attention of what the state of Colorado Independent Ethics Commission Code of Conduct Policies and Procedures. And it says, "The definition of appearance of impropriety means conduct perceived by a reasonable person to impair the ability to carry out official responsibilities with fairness, impartiality, objectivity, and integrity." And Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate your opening comments when you were bringing in that other person to the Board of Appeals of Honesty and Fairness. You asked that person, are you able to perform that? And I think that's key in my comments here tonight. B, conflict of interest means a situation in which an individual's personal or financial interest conflicts with the individual's official responsibilities. E, potential conflict of interest means a situation in which an actual conflict of interest does not yet... E, potential conflict of interest means a situation in which an actual conflict of interest does not yet exist, but may exist in a foreseeable future. Policies. The Ethics Commission, individuals governed by these policies and procedures shall perform their duties and responsibility with fairness, impartiality, objectivity, and shall maintain the integrity of the public trust vested in them. B, the individuals governed by these policies and procedures shall not commit family, social, political, financial, or other personal interests or relationships to influence the individual's conduct or judgment. I go back to item B and talk about family. Item D, the individuals governed by these policies and procedures shall avoid conflicts of interest, appearances of impropriety, and other situations that erode the public trust. And that's the point, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to diverge from ethics code. Councilwoman Case, I've been to three of your meetings. And on three of these meetings regarding this particular project, you have referred individual citizens to contact the Planning Commission to get information on the Village of Tamarack. People have done that at great lengths. And the city attorney has responded that the city has no responsibility to answer individual citizens' requests. However, on the last, Mr. Mayor, on the last Board of Adjustment meeting, it was a constant ant trail between the developers and the developer's attorney up to this office talking with the city attorney and the city planner. As a citizen, we're just looking, we're coming back into your words, Mr. Mayor, impartiality and fairness. That's all I think everybody strives for. My only question to you, Mr. Mayor, and the council, by allowing Ms. LaBarre to vote on this particular motion where she is related to one of the primary developers of a tiny home, or whatever we're calling them anymore, is that, sir and panel, in the best interest of this city? I was, I've never been the mayor of a city, but I have been in your seats, distinguished council members. And our position in the city council that I sat on was ever, if you're ever in doubt to recuse, you recuse. You step out of the fight. It's better for the city, it's better for the council, it's better for the citizens. So, Mr. Mayor, my question to you and the council, if you're willing to answer if this is the proper form, what is the city's position on recusal? And I thank you for your time.
You bet. I appreciate your time and your forthrightness and respect. We're not going to have a conversation.
I understand.
But I'm going to let our city attorney answer your questions.
Thank you, sir.
So briefly put, the emergency ordinance that was brought forth at last week's special meeting specifically was not geared towards that particular project, as it can't be. That project has already been filed. It's already in the process. We cannot change the law halfway through the process. So the ordinance that was before council is whether or not similar types of uses should have a pause on them or not. So it was not specific to any developer, any particular property, any particular project, or anything of the sort. So that's, the city's position is, at this point, moving forward, it would be speculative at best to determine whether or not there's additional conflicts as there's no current, we can't use legislation to target individuals. And so because there's no project or anything that that ordinance was looking at, there isn't really anything to be, aside perhaps from your perspective or your views, there wasn't anything that that ordinance was particularly, or anyone, that that was particularly targeting. Does that make sense?
It does, Mr. Attorney. But I do just one last, and I'm not trying to go over my time, Mr. Mayor.
You're doing great.
Cut me out.
You're doing great.
I come back to the interest of the citizens. Sir, you understand that this is a lightning rod in the city. I mean, you read the, I know the city council said you know nothing about this project. You'd stake arms off. I've heard that three times. And I respect every one of your decisions. However, I know you watch the news and I know you read the column. So we understand this is a controversial topic. So I come back to the one comment about to erode the public trust. If I am the daughter-in-law of the developer of tiny homes and the city brings forward a moratorium to possibly not cease and desist, it's a 90-day hold period just to review your zoning, which I appreciate the city manager and you personally. I appreciate you bringing that agenda forward. I am, a lot of people thank you for doing that. But I'm just saying, in my position, would the citizens and the council and Mr. Mayor be better served had a person that is a family member of the developer recuse herself? Ma'am, I mean no disrespect to you. We're talking just general terms.
I actually had a helping therapist. The emergency moratorium was not going to affect Tamarack immediately.
Right.
It was going to be any future.
Sure.
I actually had a lawyer, and I asked, "Are there any current applications?" And they answered, "No." So there was nothing conflicting with me to vote. So had Tamarack been impacted by it, or would it be affected by it? I would have recused. I would have recused myself of any of it. And had any of it occurred, I would have acted. Even though, even though I am not required to, I do still have a care. So I am always proud of myself on this emergency moratorium. I do not, because it has to be the government. There were no current or future applications in the contract that had any...
Mr. Mayor, I know I'm going over time.
This is...
Sir? He's the next...
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Carol.
Could the attorney remind everyone that although we did not vote on an emergency moratorium, we moved to institute a moratorium for at least a year? And we will hear that on first posting at the next council meeting.
Chuck, thank you very much. That's a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Neal?
Sorry.
Can we say?
Yeah, say what you like.
Oh, I would just like to say that Councilwoman LaBarre has always, always done the right thing and recused herself when needed. When you say a lightning rod, I'm not sure you've been in this town long enough to know what a lightning rod is. When it comes to Walmart, when it comes to the Aquatic Center. When you have this room full and people out there waiting to talk, that's a lightning rod. And so the mayor and I have also been accused of issues because when the Aquatic Center was there, we were actually coaches. I was soccer and he was baseball. And they felt that was a conflict of interest and it would, we didn't, if we recused ourselves from the Aquatic Center vote, that was the right thing to do. But we had no financial gain. And I don't know how an Aquatic Center at a school would affect our job. I mean, so if you say lightning rod, please be careful because we've dealt with some lightning rods already. So...
That's it. Thank you very, thank you very...
We can talk after.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, I hope I read this right. Marshall Warren? Yes, sir. Point well taken. Thank you very much. Mr. Gallagher left before I wanted to encourage him to run for mayor. Okay, that's all I have on my list. Anybody else here that would like to speak on agenda item number five?
I just want to ask one more time for the city manager or the attorney to explain what is going to happen with the moratorium.
So, at the end of the special meeting, city council voted to, or gave direction to staff to place a more deliberate, traditional moratorium ordinance on first reading on September 19. Will be properly posted. It will allow any potential property owners who could be affected by it to present comment that night. So, in addition to that, city staff was also directed to work with the planning director to start the process of review of zoning code immediately, so that, on that particular issue as well. So both of those are being addressed. That's, is that to answer your question?
It does, thank you.
And if I could reiterate, a moratorium is proactive, looking forward. At this point, there aren't any projects that we're aware of. It's just a matter of placing a pause so that we don't have those projects turned in during that review process. But it certainly cannot affect anything that has already been given to the planning department. When you come to the planning department with your application, you get the law as it is the day you turn it in. So that's to make sure everybody's clear, it cannot change what's already happened and what's already in the pipeline.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, council?
May I make one more comment? This moratorium will also be very narrowly defined. So it will not impact other projects that may be duplexes, or apartments, or subdivisions, or other aspects. It will only be for item 1809090 N1. So, very narrowly defined. And the Planning Commission will begin our discussions on September 26 in a work session.
And Sally, that is exactly what we asked. We asked for the language from the emergency ordinance to be used for the more deliberate moratorium.
There are so many rumors in this community that we're stopping growth based on this moratorium. That is not the case. Or, what's the other one I heard today? That there have been applications submitted. That is not the case at this point. We do not have any applications.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Harvey? Thank you. So one of the qualifiers on the moratorium emergency was to disallow any single family on a multifamily property. That would include a 6,000 square foot home. And interestingly enough, I'm not certain that that narrows the field much. So, has there been any interest in...
So, it's multiple, single-family detached. So if it's a single-family home and that's all that's being added to that property, that moratorium as currently drafted wouldn't apply. It's just if you're looking at putting multiple detached, single-family homes, so very, very narrow, on a single lot, very narrow focus. And I recall, I don't have this, I had it last week, but I don't have it this week. I recall this might affect maybe 19 to 25 properties throughout the entire city. So we're talking about a very, very narrow issue.
So I also don't have it in front of me, but I recall that it said any single family.
In a multifamily zone.
On a multifamily zone, correct.
Not the actual moratorium.
There's a whole range of possibilities.
Yeah, so the moratorium, I apologize if there was confusion. And I'll double-check that before we bring it back on first reading. But it's designed for multiple detached, single-family homes.
Just FYI, because that's the way I interpret it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. And so everybody, and to what Mr. Gallagher said before, one of the reasons that we didn't move forward with the moratorium because clearly, from some of the council expertise, it was not an emergency. But, that said, everybody agrees that the code needs change, starting with our planning director. And so we're trying to get this thing right. It's going to take some time. And I know that people in that neighborhood are not happy. But, trust me on this, we're going to get this thing right at the end of the day. It may not be in 90 days, it may be longer, but we're going to do everything we can to update this code so it fits in today's world. And so I hope everybody will at least give us that courtesy and that time and be part of the discussions when they come up, because we're very interested in your input. But the role of this council and the goal of this council is to get it right. And we're going to do everything we can to do that. Okay. That said, we'll move on to unfinished business. And Darren, you want me to give this to you or Emily on the approval of amendment 1347? Emily, thank you.
Technical difficulties here. Thank you again. What you have in front of you is a, it's basically a continuation from the May 2 meeting when the previous finance director put forward the supplemental. And we had to update because at the time, the Phase 1 and 2 were approved. And it was not known at the time, the amount for the compensation increase. And this, what you have in front of you actually has the full supplemental with the compensation increases. And it affects the general fund and Culture and Recreation Fund and the Water Utility Fund. And also, one thing I would like to note, besides obviously the updates for the compensation plan, are that based on this updated information and getting up to date through June on reconciliations and general entries so that our books are up to date, we are looking at a 16.93 estimated unrestricted unassigned fund balance reserve for the general fund.
16.93.
16.93.
Emily, if you could just, if you could hit just the four funds, general fund, victim assistance fund, Culture and Recreation Fund, and water wastewater, the new amounts to the city council. Those are the only four items that changed from the previous, and that's why it's just an administrative. We wanted to bring it back to make sure you are, you understand what those numbers are. There's actually just the, the overall amount for, the total amount actually fell from what was previously posted. There is a slight increase, I believe, in the general fund. I think of maybe, I think it ended up being, it was actually at 228. And when it was proposed originally, it's at 224 now on here. But if you could just touch on those four numbers real quick.
Just as far as the compensation itself?
Yeah, the increases, because those are the only changes that were made to this supplement.
So there's 120, 120,504 for the general fund. 852 for the grants fund, and I think I forgot to mention that one earlier. 11,432 for Culture and Recreation. And 5,051 for water and wastewater.
Emily, mine's, on the staff report, it says 53,000 for the grants fund.
That is a total, that is the total number for all of the amendments.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And if you also, if I can, I did, I took the liberty of, the green briefing I gave you earlier in the evening actually has the Phase 1 and Phase 2 at the top of it, on the, I believe, the third page of that briefing. It gives you the actual dollar amount changes that I briefed tonight, the ones that we just referenced. So if you look at that, you can see the new supplemental needed on Phase 1 and Phase 2 on that sheet is exactly what Emily is briefing tonight.
Those are bigger numbers than we saw before. Not the numbers, the size of the numbers. This.
Oh yeah, there you go. Yes, sorry. Yeah. Sorry, I was like, yeah. Sorry, you couldn't read, I was like, whoa, whoa. Those are, yes, you're correct. Those are bigger font.
Are we, are we trying to save ink? Is that what this is all about?
For the what you have in front of you right now?
Yeah, for any of it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm going to bring a magnifying glass.
So, yeah, I went through all these numbers. Looks great. Supplemental appropriation data under general fund. First four items are carried forwards from 2018. After that, there's some compensating expenditure revenue issues. Remind me again, I think you've stated this clearly, and I just want to be clear that I understand, you're bringing the compensation salary forward into 2019 instead of 2020?
The salary survey? That was originally, yeah, we had to bring that, that's why it was there. That was actually something the city council had already seen. We brought those numbers forward as a, into, it hadn't, I think what had happened is that it wasn't actually properly noted in the previous budget. So it was, it was something city council approved.
So it was a placeholder that we're now executing?
Correct. The exact amount of what was approved. So that's an up, that was the update.
Anything else, council? Okay, we need a motion to approve ordinance 1347 adjusting expenditure appropriations.
So moved.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
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 Sanier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we have no ordinances on initial posting tonight. We'll go to public hearings, and this one's QJ, so let me read the QJ announcement. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. And that said, I'll hand it over to Chrissy Stapelford in approving application from Rhapsody LLC.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Tonight, we have an application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license. The application details are that they have a current sales tax and EIN number. The applicant is eligible to apply for a liquor license. The location is eligible to be licensed. The owner is Rhapsody LLC, and it's Erin O'Connell, and she's here this evening if you have any questions for her. The possession of the property is documented by lease through June 30th, 2020. The property is located at 121 West Midland Avenue. Just for reference, it's the old Lush building, in case anybody was curious. The application was submitted on June 27th, 2019. The property was posted on August 19th. Public notice was published in the paper on August 28th. The operation of the business is in compliance with local zoning, building, and fire regulations. All applicable fees have been paid, and a petition providing the needs and desires of the neighborhood, containing the signatures of nine business owners and residents in support of granting the liquor license. Are there any questions for me or Erin this evening?
Let's have the applicant come forward and introduce herself.
Alrighty.
Give us your name and address, and-
Hello, I'm Erin O'Connell, at 761 Columbine Village Drive in Woodland Park.
And of course, obvious question is, why the heck do you want to open a bar in this town?
I'm opening the place that I've wanted to go to for the last 11 years. I think it's filling a void, both in need and space, that building's been sitting there vacant. The week I closed, Main Street actually was doing their citywide cleanup, and they did the windows, and just having some, a little bit of vitality on that corner was really instrumental. We were standing right there when the DDA did their dedication for the new sculpture, the parking lot's right there, pedestrians go there, I think it's going to create a lot of value to the community. We don't have a lot of outside spaces here, and we enjoy our outside space, so that patio going to waste made me really sad. So, I decided if no one else was going to do it, I was going to do it myself.
God bless you. Honestly, I think it's a great idea. Tell us a little bit about it, you've got a great crowd here, tell us what you're going to do.
All right, well, it's called Rhapsody, it's kind of a double entendre from Bohemian Rhapsody. The vibe will have a Bohemian look, and rhapsody is a musical term, so we want to focus on live music, both local to Woodland Park and Teller County, but also bringing people up from the springs. We want to be open to, obviously pleasing our locals, but also a great place for our tourists to come through, just another place for them to stop. I know several other restaurant and bar owners in town, and we plan to work together and send each other places and do promotional deals. I also was in charge of the bar and restaurant pub crawl for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, so bringing all of our bars and restaurants and community together for big events is kind of what I want to be a part of. So, having a place that everyone can go and hang out and play games and drink and eat and look at the view, that's my mission.
So you'll have a Queen, Freddie Mercury sort of vibe?
Yeah, we're going to play it every day, all day.
Bohemian Rhapsody, I had to say that. It's good. Carol?
I don't know if Sally or Lori could talk about the history of that building. It has a little bit of an architectural ancestry.
Yeah, do you hear it?
Yeah. I do know, so it was built in 1950, and it was built by, the architect did one of the Rockefeller buildings, and it was originally made as a propane sales place. So when Lush bought it, there was a toilet, and that's about it. So they actually, to their credit, they put a lot of work, a lot of time and money into that, and trying to make it something, it just didn't work for them. But I wanted to take their vision and run with it, because it's been here, I found a picture from the 60s the other day, someone had posted it on one of the Colorado historical sites, and it had, you know, all the stepside trucks coming up, and you know, just the dirt roads. So that building's been there a really long time, so it's, we plan on doing some renovations to make it change, but we want to also leave the essence of it, so that we have the history preserved.
Thank you, excellent.
Anybody else? We are on public comment, so I'm going to ask you just to step aside and see if anybody would like to comment on this issue. If you would. No, 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 no. Thank you. Paul? Paul? Well, she can think it well after you get up here. In the meantime, Erin, I know a couple of bar and restaurant owners, if you want to reach out, I can help you out, I think.
Paul Neal again. Can you talk about the vision, is there going to be a hotel part of it?
No, we're not, we're, I wish, we have very tight quarters if we were to put a hotel there. The reason it's a hotel and restaurant license is we're going for the full liquor license, so we're going to have craft cocktails, local beers, local wines, but in order to go for the full liquor license, we had to go under what's called the hotel and restaurant license application.
That's a great explanation. Anybody else for Erin? Uh-uh.
I wish I could open now, we're, right now, we're going through the permitting process and getting all of our plans approved through both up in Teller County, and also, we're under the Pikes Peak Regional District, so that's out of Colorado Springs and Teller County Health Department. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of moving parts. So I'm fairly new to the actual restaurant ownership business, so it's been a learning curve for me. So, I have a good team, we're working with local contractors, local vendors, and a lot of people in the community have supported me in this. So, as soon as we can get open, I will put the word out, for sure.
That's awesome. Counsel, anything else? Bohemians are peaceful people.
Absolutely. We're a lot of fun. We're a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Erin, thanks very much. Chrissy, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Counsel, we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the liquor licenses presented.
Second. And a second. Suzanne?
The bar?
Yes.
Maybe?
Yes.
Sanier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Suzanne. Erin, best of luck to you. Good luck, you'll get a lot of support.
Good luck here.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9A, and discussion of council liaison to the DDA board. Not exactly sure how to start this conversation, but about a month ago, at a DDA meeting, the appointee, the liaison that the city council appoints to the DDA, was asked to step down. And there was some conversation, and so, we're going to kind of investigate this and talk about this, and see who actually makes these decisions. I'm going to start with Mary Jo Larson.
Mary Jo Larson, 200 West Midland Avenue, Woodland Park.
Thank you. Why don't you give us a sense of what happened at the meeting, what the background was, what your thoughts are on trying to remove somebody that the council votes on your committee?
The real reason, it's nothing really personal, we didn't feel that we were at, having, Kelly had missed several meetings, we didn't feel with her attitude sometimes towards the DDA, what she had been vocal about, and thinking that we should just be a moratorium and we should dissolve, and things like that, that had been mentioned. We're starting into some process, negotiations with two developers on the Woodland Station property, and we just felt that we didn't have the proper information being carried to council, that would need to be as we were in these developments. And we just thought that it might be time, before they start, to have maybe a different liaison that was more part of the group.
Can I argue, there's been other DDA members that have missed meetings and have been controversial, and you've never asked them to step aside? A, and B, I don't understand why your board thinks that that's a decision that you would make, rather than the city council.
It, we were, it was the pleasure of the city council, you appoint them. It was just a request that we were making, that you would consider before, and it's your decision. If Kelly stays, Kelly could be a real asset, if she would be, and I would hope that she maybe would change her mind and return phone calls, be part of the information that would be covered at the meetings, it'd be up to par with it. Like I said, we made our recommendation, we're asking if you do find, if you don't find, if it's someone other than Neal, I mean Noel, as someone other than Noel, we're, it's your pleasure.
Thanks, I'm going to let Kelly speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would say that I did miss some meetings. There are things in our life that come up that call us away, and so, I did notify the administrative assistant that I would be absent. And as far as returning phone calls and things like that, I'm a firm believer in the public process. As I said at the last DDA meeting, I would, I expect for discussions to take place in the meetings, not one-on-one conversations about everything. Not everything, but a great deal of things. I, I believe that the method that was used to ask me to step down was, number one, it certainly did deflect from the lovely and very interesting presentation by one of the developers that was mentioned. It kind of overshadowed that whole presentation because of the shock value of asking me to step down in the public session, without any discussion. And I did ask during the meeting, if that was a decision of the full board, of which I was a member, or if that was a subset of the board. And the reaction I got from three of the members of the board was that they had no knowledge. And so, I, I am, I am not one that you can put words in my mouth, I think for myself, and I think I've carried a message from the meetings back to the council, which is my job, and sometimes, it's not always going to be what someone wants to hear. I have expressed my opinions and my position with regards to the existence of the DDA, and I don't think that I've been, I've dodged that at all. That's just the person I am, which sees what you get, I speak my mind, and listen, I try to listen as well. But, anyway, I'm, I am, I'm a big girl, and I don't take this personally at all, this is business, and happy to do and serve however this council would like me to serve.
Well, and we appreciate that, but tell us what you want.
What do I want?
What do you want?
World peace. World peace. A million dollars, world peace. You know, that's, that's a hard question to answer. I would like to, I would like, number one, I'm going to be, I'm going to be honest, since we're putting the cards on the table, I'd like to see meetings ran properly and orderly at the meetings of the DDA. They're governed by Robert's rules, just as this board and every other board is governed. I'd like to see agendas published, I'd like to see packets available, I'd like for information to be distributed to the board of directors to use in their decision-making process, and I'd like to see more order and better leadership on that board of directors.
You feel you could help in that regard?
I've tried. I have a great deal of institutional knowledge, I was around on staff when the DDA was an idea. Have worked with all the lenders, have been around for all the debt issues, have been around for all the projects that have come forward and not come to fruition, for no one's, no one's fault. Part of it was because of recession. I think the biggest one that we saw really kind of went away because of recession and lack of ability to be funded. We've seen some great ideas come through, nothing has worked yet. Doesn't mean that something can't work. I think we have some, although I can't talk about them in specifics, I think we have some real promising projects coming forward, and it's pretty cool to have three different parties and groups interested in possibly doing something with that land over there. So, that's encouraging. I would suggest that maybe I'm not going to be as effective as I could be because of the majority of them that appear to not want me there anymore, and I'm, I'm good with that. If that's what makes this organization better, and serve the purpose to the community that it should, then that's what I'm about. As I said in the meeting, I will respect this council's decision, and I will support that going forward, and whatever is best for our community.
Mary Jo-
But I would ask that that, that this board get some order in their meetings.
Mary Jo indicated that if you would like to stay on, it seems like they would be receptive to that. Would you like that?
I would be happy to do that. It's not a matter of like. I'm here to serve, and if that's, if that's the best, then that's what will happen. But if, if there's someone else on this panel that would like to serve and feels that they could do a better job, or add value, then that's what we should do. But I think it needs to be a decision of all of us, and I'm happy to move forward. I'm an adult, this isn't personal, it's business. Doesn't mean I'm not going to express my opinion and my thoughts, and we're not always going to agree. But I, I do make up my own mind, and I do listen to the information, and I have a lot of history and institutional knowledge to base my judgment and decisions on, and so...
Thank you. Counsel, who would like to start?
That's how I feel.
Carol?
Well, I think my only comment would be that, I think at this time in history, Kelly Case is the right representative from the council to the DDA, and if Kelly is comfortable with continuing to serve, I would like to keep her on that board as the council representative.
Is this a consensus issue?
Looking at Jason for-
So am I.
... with that one.
This is a first.
So I would, I would defer back to what it takes to appoint somebody would be a consensus. I guess ultimately, if you choose not to appoint someone else, the current status stands, but if you're looking to appoint someone new, you'd have a vote to do that.
My motion then, Mr. Mayor, would be that we take no action, and that Kelly continue to serve as the council's representative to the DDA.
Okay, if I get a second for that, we'll have further discussion. I will second your motion. Let's have further discussion, and we have a motion on the floor. Val, would you like to chime? I'll, I'll wait till everybody else has done. Hillary?
Sure.
Sorry. I think it's, it's interesting for me, because I'm one of the newest council members, and from what I know, though, in history, as soon as a council member isn't either carrying a message, or the message the DDA wishes to have carried forward, the DDA asks for them to be replaced, or they speak of being unhappy with them. I don't personally care which one of us would be the representative. I know they've asked for Noel, I appreciate that. I have no problem supporting either Noel- I have no problem supporting either Noel or Kelly. I would like to make the point, though, that the DDA, in my mind, is quite similar to a bureaucracy. They are appointed by us, they are not elected by the people, so if they do something wrong, the people can't remove them. The only person that sits on that board that can be removed by a citizen is one of us. So we have to weigh very carefully how we vote and how we behave on that board. And if it's wrong and just the board doesn't like it, then the board has the choice to come back to us and ask for them to be removed. But we answer to more than just the board, we answer to 8,000 people. So at times, when the council votes and the board positions, which I also disagree with, but statutorily there they have a vote, I always think the council should, the council member on the board should consistently recuse themselves because I think a council vote could be inconsistent with a DDA vote. So I don't like the council position in the first place on the DDA, that's my own personal opinion. I don't like the DDA because I think it's a bureaucracy that maintains control over taxpayer dollars. They are a small group of unelected people who maintain control over tax dollars. It doesn't mean that the DDA is bad, I am good friends with the majority of the people on the DDA, I respect every one of them. But it's a difficult board and is a difficult position for the council member that is appointed to be in. I don't expect the council member to always carry a consistent message to us that is in agreeance with the DDA. If there's a diverse opinion, I wanna hear it, I need to know that. I need to know that they're also representing the 8,000 citizens and not just the DDA. So that being said, I I don't personally care who represents us on the DDA board, I think it is a difficult position to be in and whoever wants to take that weight, I'm I'm welcome that it be them, not me, so.
Thank you. Paul?
Well, I have always asked this council and this city management to please understand, be cooperative, move forward. The DDA, as it stands today, to me, from when I first came on the council till now, has finally been put in a position where they can move forward. There has been so much negativity put into papers and rumors and this and that. Actually, for me to sit on council and to look back at this in the rearview mirror, it's easy for me to do. It's been absolutely horrible. I don't want to be in that fight. I see a bright future for the DDA, I see a bright future for the city, I see people now wanting to invest in that property. We really don't need to be sitting here having this discussion. Being civil to each other and working together and looking at things in a common sense way is the best thing that we could possibly do as a council, as a city, and not to keep beating this hornet's nest over and over and over again. I do see a bright future, I see that property being used for economic development in the very near future. I see people who are honestly trying to make it work. I do hope, and my prayer is, that this all works out. I have no dog in this fight, everybody knows how I feel about DDA, Main Street, keep Woodland Park beautiful. I want to see us move forward in a civil way with respect to everyone, from the DDA board to the council to the city. That's all I want. I have nothing negative to say about any issues here whatsoever. God bless you guys, I hope you come forward with an agreement. My prayer is that you would pay off the city, the debt, I'm sorry things fell through, I'm sorry I had to sit here and see things unravel as economic development unraveled and that you just got put in the position that you got pushed put in and pushed in the direction that you got pushed in. The future is bright. And that's how I feel, that's how I feel. I don't see no argument here, I just don't see it.
Well said, Paul, thank you. Noel?
Well, since I'm part of this controversy, ah, where shall I start? In the recent months, as a council, we haven't been really working with the DDA. We've actually been working against them, it feels like. And and therein lies the crux, is that the DDA feels like we've been trying to strong-arm them, strong-arm them and change things to to tell them how to run their, the DDA, how to run the DDA. And as the DDA would feel that's, you know, it's now council versus DDA, which was completely what we were not trying to do, but the perception was there. And so we we have to mend that bridge and being that I've been on the DDA for three and a half years, almost four years, I know how the DDA works, I know how a TIF works, and I work with every single member of the board, I'll be at every meeting. We have to build that bridge back up because right now that bridge is not there. And I believe that as a DDA liaison, I can rebuild that bridge, work with them, have individual voice, I I think that's the concern, is that 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 you feel that I'm part of that group, I'm not part of that group, I'm an individual, I've always been that way, you know that from working with me on council. So I believe as we have to rebuild that bridge. And at the moment, the current liaison has not built that bridge up as, there was the bridge there and I don't know what happened, I mean, Councilwoman Case was working great with the DDA and then I'm something changed recently and I don't know what that is and and I'm sorry that happened. I wish it didn't happen, but I I think it's time to rebuild that bridge and and I believe I can do that.
Well? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hillary, what she said? Paul, what he said? Noel, what he said? I have objected since the moment I took my seat here about how the DDA works. Unfortunately, it's statutory, I still don't like it. You've got a city council person sitting on both the city council and the DDA board with voting rights and supposedly a liaison hat on too, it's just a very uncomfortable position. It's it's hard to work that, no matter who's sitting there. Thank you very much for never voting me into that position. And that goes for the future. There's a very limited subset of people up here who would actually volunteer to get in that position, we've heard from two of them. That might be the extent of it, frankly. But I've always been extremely bothered by the problems that one has as a city council person sitting on a subservient board as a voting member. It it's just, it's it's impossible to see how there's not a conflict of interest. So some of the former, at least one of the former or concurrent liaisons has decided that with the advice of city attorney and legal, that there's options to defer some of those things. Some of those things are misinterpreted as disinterest, that's not necessarily the case. If I was sitting there, people know me as kind of a tough guy sometimes, it's not really true, my cats wouldn't agree with that. But it's a tough job, it's a really tough job to discern where you get to vote one way and then put another hat on next Thursday and go and, yes, you can do your liaison job both ways. Here's the city council position, here's the DDA position, blah, 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 but you're you're sitting there as a voting member. So I'm a liaison and have been on several things, all of us here have been liaisons and things, it's a real easy job with the liaison hat. Once you put that into a voting member of the board, it changes the whole character. You 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 lose the ability to remain independent and 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 because you you really have to have those two hats on and it's really three hats, it's not two hats, it's three hats. So you have the liaison and you have the board member of two, one being a subservient board member and and naturally, if if I was sitting there, thank goodness, that's never gonna happen, I would probably defer every time to my city council vote. I know that was one of the problems with that came up and I respect that that's a problem, but it's apparently a statutory problem that we can't solve, that would be my question, can we solve that sort of situation? On the other hand, I I wanna I wanna talk about something that those of us who've gone through a divorce.
Hold on one second, Val, if you would please keep it to the discussion and Kelly being on the board and being removed, can you do that?
Was was I going off channel?
Well, I thought you were when you were just talking about your marriage.
So irretrievably broken is a term used in legal terms. Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. Irretrievably broken, that's what I'm interested in, do we have an irretrievably broken situation here? That has to do with the DDA board, has to do with the representative. I would ask that each party get up once again and discuss if it's an irretrievably broken situation. If it's not, I would ask that we move forward and and either consider everybody sitting up here or the current situation stands and we have a motion on the on the table for that. But I I would ask that we get a little input on irretrievably broken situation if you wouldn't mind.
No, if they'd like to weigh in, Carol?
I only had one question, I wanted to, Noel, you did serve on DDA at one time and I can't recall, why did you leave the board?
Kelly Kelly got elected and asked me if she wanted to take it and I was, I wanted her to be on the board. So it wasn't, there wasn't a, it was just the election and and she had.
I had expressed an interest.
Yeah, she had expressed an interest, we talked about it and we came to an agreement and so she she took over for me at the election.
Val's asked, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Carr has asked a relevant question. We've heard Mary Jo's explanation, if there's anyone else from the DDA that would like to talk about the irretrievably broken or not relationship, in North Carolina it was irreconcilable differences from.
It was many, many years ago, yeah.
It would be irreconcilable differences.
But I I don't wanna call the question until anyone from the DDA would like to speak. They're all wearing up here.
Adrian for DDA.
The chair would be.
You know, my issue with this is is not Kelly or Noel or anybody else, but it's about the process. And I don't believe that the DDA has the right to ask for somebody's resignation. We appoint people to boards one time after another, just like we did tonight, and there must be 30 or 40 of them out there, there may be more. And when these committees start telling us who they want on their board and who they don't want on the board and we don't like them because they don't agree with us, I don't like that process. And I hope everybody agrees, that's not the way to do things. Irreconcilable differences, for me, I don't get it. Kelly's willing to work for the betterment of our community and that's what she does and she does it well, she does it on a daily basis. Are there some differences? Of course there are some differences, that's how we get better. And so, again, my issue is the process, not so much who sits on that board. If anybody would like, else would like to speak to that, that's great, if not, I'm gonna call for the question. Mr. Coy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tanner Coy, 240 East Highway 24. I just wanna clarify that the DDA board is not telling you who they like or who they don't like, is not dictating or demanding or, you know, in any other way, doing anything other than suggesting that we may not have the best relationship we can and that we should, that as people in positions of public authority, we do have a duty to maintain the best relationships that we can, honest and open communication and teamwork. We owe that to all of the citizens, that's our job. And it's also incumbent upon us to recognize if we don't believe that's the case, if something has gone maybe a little, not the way that it should. We have a job to recognize that and do what we can to fix it. So the liaison position was on the DDA board's agenda, it was brought up, the discussion was very brief, the question was whether Ms. Case would be willing to step aside for someone else to sit in that seat. Councilmember Sawyer was there, said he would be willing to do it, Ms. Case agreed, she would resign. That's pretty much how it went and here we are. There's there's no pressure coming from the DDA to demand a change or anything like that, I wanna make sure you understand that.
I was there, I understand it, you precipitated it, not you, the DDA did. And let's talk about team a little bit, since you brought it up. If I got a guy on my team that I don't like the way things are going, I'm not gonna kick him off my team, I'm sorry. That's not what great leaders do. Let's help him get better, let's have the discussion, let's make sure we're all on the same page. We don't just kick him off and bring somebody else in, because the grass isn't always greener. And I think that process, again, it just befuddles me, it it makes us look bad and it's not what this community's all about. So say what you want, but that's where I'm gonna fall on the matter and now we have a call for the question.
No one kicked anyone off the team, no one did. And it's hard to coach that person or help that person when they won't return a phone call, when they missed six of the last board meetings, it's difficult.
That is not true. I have not missed six of the board meetings.
We have a call for the question, thank you for your comments. Suzanne?
So Mayor, leave me the motion that council has on the table right now is to take no action and I think City Attorney Myers said that if that's the case, we don't have to take a vote.
Correct, there's nothing to to change. If there is a call to.
Thank you.
Reappoint somebody, that would be the the time to call for a vote, otherwise no action's necessary.
So tell me again what you need from us.
We got a consensus.
Consensus, we don't need a vote. Okay, yes or no, do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes, one, two, Kelly?
As I said, I'm happy to continue to serve at the council's pleasure. I would just like to say that there probably will be, in fact, the meeting was changed from this Tuesday, which I had on my schedule, which is our normal meeting date for the DDA, regular meeting during the month, and that was changed to the 10th, which I cannot attend. So I I've already notified the administrative assistant that since the date of meeting was changed, I have already have scheduled closings with my business that I cannot miss. So regularity, some order with the meetings would be very helpful and I am happy to wipe the slate clean and start over.
Then we have a consensus.
Thank you.
Kelly will remain until further notice. Okay, thanks, council, I thought that was a good discussion. We're gonna move on to mayor's reports. I'm sorry, 9B, we gotta go to you first.
Yeah, I want some spotlight this evening. We've We've got on the agenda to consider an appeal, just very briefly so Council's aware, this has been a fun process for staff to learn a lot about the code and some of the idiosyncrasies that we have here. So with the Village of Tamarack, there was an opportunity for citizens who felt aggrieved by the decisions of staff to make their appeal. Those appeals went to the Board of Adjustment. The way the code reads is if the applicant in that particular issue has an appeal, that appeal, for whatever reason, comes to City Council. So something aside will probably look at adjusting the process in the future. But again, it's been stated many times, you get the law the way it is the day you turn in your application. So this particular issue, rather than trying to do three appeals all at the same time, having them order themselves through the process without trying to conflict the issues, we talked with the developer who wanted this to be read into the record. I know that's against City Council's policy, but before you is an agreement, more or less a letter of understanding between the developer and the city that by continuing their appeal to the next city council meeting on the 19th, it won't violate any of their opportunities or extinguish their appeal rights, and the city's acknowledging that. We're just allowing this to move to the next agenda so that the Board of Adjustments can finish their job and their appeals so that they're not conflated.
So there's no discussion on this tonight?
The recommendation of staff is to table this until the, I believe, the 19th.
So move.
I'm sorry.
So move. Okay. So move. I need a second.
Second.
Any other discussion, Council? Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Rick Hughes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Great, thanks, Suzanne. Okay, we're going to move on, reports, agenda item number 10. And every Friday, tomorrow, 8 to 1, Woodland Park Farmers Market in Memorial Park, that'll run through the end of September. September 7th, that's this Saturday, from 7 to 2, is the Citywide Garage Sale. It's at Woodland Park High School, always a well-attended event. Also Saturday, September 7th, from 9 to 3, one of the great events in our community. I think it's the 26th Annual Cruise Above the Clouds at Memorial Park. Last year, I think, close to 400 cars, not sure how many they're going to have this year, but just a great event. Weather's supposed to be a little iffy, but if it's not raining too hard, everybody should come out and see what a great variety of cars from early 1900s all the way through today. September 11th, that's 9/11. You can't really say enough about 9/11 and how you want to remember, how you want to celebrate. But at 7 o'clock in the morning at Lyons Park, there'll be a flag-raising ceremony. We'll put all the flags out with the VFW and the DAV and a bunch of retired folks. That happens at 7 o'clock. It's kind of a sombering ceremony. And then following at 9 o'clock, the Patriots Day Remembrance Ceremony at Lyons Park, there'll be a number of elected officials and others that will be there to help us all remember and just kind of revisit 9/11. There'll be a bunch of kids there, I believe, singing. And if I got my math right, after 18 years now, I don't believe any of those kids today will have been born that fateful day 18 years ago. So I'm encouraging everybody to come out. It really is a great ceremony and as meaningful as anything that we do. Saturday next, the 14th, Woodland Music Series at Midland Pavilion, that's from 11 to 1. Also on the 14th, Bike the Night, beginning at Memorial Park, that goes from 6 to 10. This coming Tuesday, the 10th, for everyone here, be sure, the volunteer picnic. And for Council, we get to have staff cook for us, so that's pretty cool. Anybody else that wants to attend, volunteer picnic at Memorial Park starts at 5:30. Chief, are you cooking?
No, he's cooking.
Jason's cooking.
Chili?
No issues with trust here. All right, and last one, Tuesday, September 17th, 5:30 to 7, Chamber Business Afterhours at Woodland Country Lodge. Al?
I have to recover.
Recover from that?
Hang on a second. I have to get somber in a second. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, boy. I've been contacted by a few citizens who asked me what I meant by higher calling in my comments before. I wanted to clarify that my higher calling, yes, I'm a believer in God and things like that, but this higher calling, when I sit here, has nothing to do with that. It has to do with all the citizens I represent and not just a small group. In addition to that, the U.S. Constitution, Colorado statutes, and Woodland Park Charter and Code. So I wanted to clarify what higher calling means when I'm sitting here. It's not the normal thing you hear on Sunday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Kelly?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Carol?
I'm still recovering. Charter Review Committee met this week, our kickoff meeting, and very pleased with the participation we have in that. We've got some real scholars. Just a couple of the issues that we queued up here to begin with, and so everyone understands, the Charter Review Committee will make recommendations for ballot initiatives in the 2020 election for potential changes to the charter. When this committee review is completed, we may have no referred ordinances to recommend to the Council, but we may have several, just to let you know that that's coming up. But some of the things that we've queued up to begin with, and I told the committee as the chair that it really mattered, didn't matter to me at all, but we're going to look at making our...the language throughout the charter gender neutral. And I said, I wore men's clothing for most of my adult career in the Army, so I don't really care if it's gender neutral. But to keep up with the times, that is one of the issues that we're going to look at. We're going to look at possibly recommending the deletion of a section of our charter that says any stipend to be considered by the...for Council members or board members in addition has to go to a public vote or a citizen's vote. We may recommend that that be deleted. We may also recommend the deletion of the Personnel Board. And some of the other things that we'll probably look at midway through this review is also possibly changing our budget cycle to...from a one-year cycle to a two-year cycle, just something that will come up in our discussions. The next meeting for the Charter Review Committee is the 17th, and those are being held at 3:30 in the afternoon in the upstairs conference room, and those are open to the public. The other committee that will be...or the task force that will be presenting on the 19th is the Deer Management Task Force. I think most of you know that that task force came together, we've got about 18 members of really talented people with such diverse backgrounds. I just feel lucky having got to know most of them. We've got everything from biologists to wildlife rehabilitationists to the...some very senior folks from the Mule Deer Association or the Mule Deer Foundation. Their task was to look at a number of options that will be recommended to the Council in an administrative action to deal with deer overpopulation in Woodland Park. This is intended to be a comprehensive plan with options that could happen this year or may be carried to the out-years. But just a heads up now to understand that these options will be voted on one by one by the Council. Our purpose in doing it this quickly after the task force formation is to get some of these options into the budget cycle, because some of them will actually take some of the city coffers. But that comprehensive plan is going to include an education plan that's tailored to this community. Many of you already know that Colorado Parks and Wildlife has an extensive education program on why we shouldn't feed deer, what are, you know, deer-resistant plants that you may use in the garden. But it's not tailored specifically to Woodland Park, and we've got some talented folks that are working on things that will be tailored for this community to include possibly doing defensive driving courses at the high school for high school students with respect to deer. There's also a possibility of recommending deer crossing corridors where we put up signage. Again, that might be an expense for the city. And then there's also going to be options that will address a very carefully managed bow hunt. This is a plan that has already been coordinated with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. I would invite citizens to hear the presentation on that plan. Again, all of these options could be executed this year or could be executed in the out-years. But I think you're going to be very pleased with the due diligence that the committee has or the task force has gone through in addressing all of these options, but especially that bow hunt plan. Are there any questions about that now? Thanks.
Thanks. Carol, your leadership has been phenomenal in both of these cases. I've had an opportunity to spend a lot of time in meetings the last few weeks, as we all have. Between that and your involved leadership on Charter Review, going to really make a difference. So thank you very much. Hillary?
You covered the whole calendar, Mr. Mayor, so I'm good. Thank you.
Paul?
Well, hey, what am I going to say? This country was built on foundation of morals and values. If I should ever forget that, I would no longer be serving the people of this community. Those values were shook on 9/11. I personally will never forget that. I stand behind the people who worked a pile, lost people, the people who went to defend this country against the terrorism, gave their lives, came back, dismembered terrible situations that they became part of. My heart goes out. I speak my heart up here. I know what the Constitution says, I know what the Charter says, and I know what the state constitution says, maybe not word by word. But it's what's in your heart that's going to come out your mouth. I feel for this community. I appreciate the people in this community. I appreciate the people that served this community in whatever capacity. I will never forget that. And I also have a higher power that's looking over me. Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior, I will never forget that. And that's how I look at situations, and that's how I try to live. I hope each and every one of yous have a wonderful, safe, and happy weekend. Enjoy cruising above the clouds. Please come out for 9/11. It's a moving ceremony. And enjoy the holidays. Be safe, don't hit no deer. Thank you, Carol. That's all I got, buddy.
Thanks, Paul. Noel?
Where are you going, huh? Yeah, that's hard to follow. I'm...it's kind of hard to watch the Council meeting tonight, sitting here. I felt like we just...we burned a bridge. There's no bridge anymore. The bridge is gone. And as a Council member, my job is not to lecture the community, it's not to lecture anybody that's a volunteer, that does their time on a board or a committee, and tell them that I tell you what to do, you don't tell me what to do. So I feel that's very wrong. I would never do that. And I saw it tonight. And I'm saddened that we've come to this point when the last four years, I've heard we've got to work together, we've got to make a better community, and what I just saw tonight is the complete opposite. We have to work with these boards and committees, and we have to not tell them what to do. And sadly, I saw that tonight. And I will never do that to any citizen. I will never do that to a board or committee or a volunteer or staff. I will never tell you what to do and that I'm here to dictate how things are run. So I truly believe that bridge is gone. I wish it turned out differently. I hope we can all step back and reevaluate how we approach our community and how we approach the way we treat our volunteers. Yes, certain boards and committees aren't run exactly like the way we think they should run, but that's the key right there, what we think. When I'm on a board and a committee, I listen, I work with those people, I compromise, I keep a line of communication, but I will never tell them that I'm telling them what to do and they shouldn't tell me what to do. So I'm sorry I saw that. I hope we can all reevaluate how we approach things in the future. That's all I have to say. So I'm sorry I heard that tonight, and I hope it changes.
And Noel, here's what I would say. Leadership's uncomfortable sometimes, and it's difficult. It's not easy sitting up here. For you to say that the bridge is down and we can't rebuild it just irks me to death because that's not it. Be a good leader, get behind Kelly, all of us, and let's make this thing work. It's not...I mean, don't make it bigger than it is. Someone that misses a few Council meetings and, you know, and doesn't agree all the time, I don't think that's what we want anyway. But if we're doing our job, right, and we all want what's best for the community, we had consensus, we've got to go with the consensus. And so whether you like the outcome or not, this is the time to support and try to build that bridge again. And that's what leaders do, and it's not easy. And we all come under fire. Every one of us up here comes under fire. And that's what we sign up for. But just to say the bridge is down and it's going to be down forever, no good. That's not what we're supposed to do. We need to be better than that.
I agree with you. We need to be better than that. There's a difference between working with somebody and telling somebody what to do. There's a big, big difference. And that's...I saw someone telling them what to do and not working with them and trying to open up a line of communication. And we are all...I'm better than that. I can...I know I've had my faults, but I definitely will always work and compromise and always find a line of communication.
Good. That'll help Kelly and all the rest of us. We'll move on to Chef Myers, I guess.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because actually I did want to tell my credentials a little bit. So I worked for Fort Morgan for six and a half, almost seven years, and I can comfortably say that I have cooked thousands of hamburgers at various events. You didn't realize that when you hired the city attorney. I don't put that on my resume. But during my term as an attorney, as I've cooked thousands of hamburgers, not a high school job, this is the real deal. And I am excited to cook those hamburgers for the community members that give their time and volunteer, and I appreciate all the work they do. They'll be delicious. You got my guarantee. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jason.
They'll be juicy, they won't dry down.
He said thousand.
Well, I'm only cooking most of it. There's going to be other chefs, so if you come to mine...yeah. Yeah. All of mine are always good.
Thank you, sir. Darren, can you follow that?
On a more serious note, I just want to echo what Paul and the mayor said earlier about the event, the 9/11 National Day of Service on... about the event, the 9/11 National Day of Service on 9/11 at Lyons Park. I invite everybody to go. I also invite you to watch the movie 12 Strong and watch my brothers from ODA 595, who were the first in the country to... In Afghanistan to take down the Taliban. I watched it a couple of weeks ago, and I just... I'll tell you what, it just renewed my... My goal to serve not only, you know, our country for 22 years, but to continue to serve this community. It's a very powerful movie, and I just invite you to watch that before you come to the park on that day. It's an incredible movie.
What's the name again?
12 Strong?
22 Strong.
12 Strong. Is it Netflix?
It's just... It's a movie about 59... ODA 595 from Fifth Special Forces Group. It's... You can watch it on Netflix or HBO or wherever, I guess, so.
And what time is the Lyons Park ceremony again?
The flag's at 7:00, and the actual ceremony will start at 9:00.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to defer my time to Karen to come up and give a presentation to city council about what we've been doing in terms of community engagement over the last few months. And then we'll follow up with the quarterly financial report with the finance director, Emily Cat Simples.
Thank you for letting me come over for a few minutes. Let me get this presentation pulled up. Okay. So, just kind of looked back over 2019 and pulled out a few of the highlights that we've been able to accomplish in 2019. Oh, you have to work the right computer, so I apologize. I really have appreciated this opportunity and community engagement and believe that it's... Everybody needs a tribe, and I think that it's really an important asset to the city to provide opportunities for the residents and stakeholders to come together and learn and participate and contribute. So, the first thing that I just wanted to touch on is the Citizens Academy. We had 28 people who registered, 26 people who actually attended a good portion of the entire academy, and 23 who graduated last spring. In the feedback, we got... The feedback questions were on a Likert scale of five points. And strongly agree and agree is what the 75% and 25% represent on this slide to represent the participants' view of the quality of the briefings and the quality of the tours through the facilities and the overall structure of the academy. And I'm going... In a moment, I'm going to show you some of the feedback, the just open-ended feedback that they gave. We're in the process of planning for the 2020 academy and want to make sure that people who will be running for office in 2020 have an opportunity to participate in the academy. It'll be completed before the election, so we'll coordinate that. I also just want to point out, the image on this slide is from this year's Touch a Truck. And it struck me that this is our kids' first kind of Citizens Academy. They get to go and experience this, and so it's a pretty cool thing. Some of the feedback, there were some good suggestions, and people want a little more information about how to be involved. They really want to stay focused. People got passionate, and it was... There were opportunities to get a little bit sidetracked to focus on some relative issues. Shortening up the briefing sessions was one of the things they suggested, and also they're really wanting to maintain the quality of this first academy that we sponsored. Kudos in a nutshell. Really appreciated the professionalism and dedication of the staff, liked the idea and the forward thinking that Darren brought the academy to the city of Woodland Park. They really see it as a great way to become involved and become informed and understand how operations work. Another area, prior to last October, the city had done really relatively little with social media. We are continuing to increase the... Our presence in the platform, primarily Facebook, and we are growing with Instagram and with Twitter. We've been able, on Facebook, to increase our followers by about 100 followers per month over the last 10 months. Most of the traffic that we put out tend to be special notices, so we want our residents to be aware of road closures, of pavement work. So, I've been working a lot with Public Works to be able to put that information out for awareness, reminders of closures or reminders for meetings or other events as well. The favorites really seem to be about our canines, our...
Of course.
At the PD, both Rico and Miles. What's the puppy's name?
Oh, no.
I should remember. Sorry to put you on the spot, but...
Why doesn't that little dog come and see us? We need to meet that dog.
But, you know, people have good hearts for animals, so... In between many things, the old-fashioned 4th of July happened. It was voted in the Best of Teller for 2018 and 2019 for best local event. And this year, we had 59 vendors. The participant estimate, since we don't have an entry gate, we go through just guestimates, but I'd say it's probably about 5,000 people that we saw up here today. The 4th of July happens because of a lot of dedication and volunteerism and a lot of work. Main Street is one of those organizations. They do all the promotional design and do the lion's share of that distribution of those promotional items, too. And this year, we did a couple of other promotional items in the north part of Colorado Springs. I think it was the Tribune that we had an add-in. Hot Shoe Barbecue is another in-kind, and Mountain Memorial Funeral Home. Every year, Steve sponsors the fishing contest for the kids in the morning, and he purchases all the prizes, he helps the kids, he runs the tournament. And, you know, here it is in the spring, give a call up there, and he says, "Of course, it's on my calendar, I'll be there." And he provides a lot of experience for our kiddos. And then the Wind Symphony also. Actually, Craig organizes all of the performances, and we've had an opportunity for some additional help in coordinating things with staff. So, I want to give kudos to Candy McDaniel for a lot of hard work that she also helped with. So, on the promotion side of things, and this image is one from a drone. We recently had some drone work done that I'm going to touch on in just a moment. But we have been focusing on the promotion of the Woodland Aquatic Center and the U-Pass Cultural Center and some general tourism. We've worked with KRDO to do a digital marketing campaign. And so, the general tourism and the... I'm finding my words here. General tourism and the Aquatic Center analytics should be out probably next week, and we're looking forward to it because after one week, the click-through rates for the digital marketing were higher than average, and we were happy about that. So, the drone work focus is focusing on wayfinding. And so, the drone operator came in, and we were focused first on the signs and then be able to take... Another video will be created by KDRO to show people how to actually get there. The Aquatic Center staff has been asking new patrons at the center how they heard about it. 60% of the participants reported that it was some sort of online, KRD radio, a Google search. 20% of the new guests reported that it was word of mouth. And, yeah, I just lost my train of thought, so... Those are the rack cards Darren just handed out. Signage, thank you. 20% found the Aquatic Center through the sign. And Darren just handed out the rack card. It was the first printing, and it's been distributed and is currently continuing to be distributed to campgrounds, to local businesses, the visitor center, folks that usually have patrons coming in to see what is available in our area. And then I just wanted to conclude by showing you a couple of 15-second videos.
Elevate your swimming experience at the Woodland Aquatic Center. Learn to swim, float and floating. Swim laps for your health. Relax and enjoy the views, or just have a blast and make a splash. The Woodland Aquatic Center voted Best of Teller 2018 and 2019.
And then general tourism.
Elevate your experience in Woodland Park.
And they'll be working on a 15-second clip for the UPCC as well, the Cultural Center, and we will look forward to that. And was there one more thing? I'm looking at... Oh, Dutch is the canine's name. And so, we'll look forward to the Cultural Center's 15-second video as well.
Darren, the drone work, was that contracted?
It was licensed, too, by the way.
Yes.
Yes, we made sure it was licensed.
Yeah.
And that was probably a question for everybody. We made sure we had a licensed drone operator.
So, Pike's Peak Ariel is the drone operator, and Scott Randall is the owner and operator. And he also... This image that you see on this slide as well is another... He took, I think, eight images from the drone up in the air, which is so cool, and the images are so vivid, so...
Good job.
Do you have questions?
Good job, Karen. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Karen. The next report will be from Emily Cat Simples, the finance director. Before she starts, I just want to talk about what's kind of led up to this process. As you know, Emily's been with us about seven weeks.
Don't steal my thunder.
Well, what I want to do is I want to thank... We have three new members of the finance department, if you're not tracking right now. And so, Emily being one of them, Monet being another, and Jennifer in finance tech. And so, it's been... It hasn't been easy for them because after the... After we had to transition with finance directors, there was a lot of work. We was right after the audit, and so there was a lot of work to get our finances, our GLs, and our bank reconciliations up to speed. And so, between now, over the last two months, they've gone overtime. They spent one of the weekends in the office, working on bank reconciliations and journal entries. And so, with the help of, you know, the entire finance department, we are here where we are today. And so, I'm going to let Emily present the quarterly financial report.
Yeah, thank you, Darren. So, yeah, I did want to preface this report tonight by first and foremost acknowledging the team, my team, that was behind getting this report to you. So, in particular, Monet Edwards, our accounting manager, and Brittany Myers, who we bought on as a temp accountant. And those two women did a phenomenal amount of work and put in a phenomenal amount of time to actually ensure that our books were up to the end of June. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. The previous finance director did not leave things in an up-to-date state. So, it has been an extremely challenging situation to walk into, but we've pulled through, and that's why you have this report tonight. And so, that being said, things are looking really good for our city. So, overall, 45% of the total general fund budget has been expended 50% of the way through the year. And, let's see, 2019 operating expenditures are 6% ahead of 2018, and this is mainly due to filling vacancies and adding two new positions in 2019, those being the in-house attorney and accountant, and then also compensation increases. And then again, second page, enter in the non-departmental area of the general fund. It is lower by 28% compared to same time last year. Legal services being moved out of the inner non-departmental and into the administration budget with the new cost for... Cost center for the city attorney being the reason for that. For finance, we have 40% higher year-to-date, that being related to the new accountant position that was created in 2019. And then skip down to revenues. Overall, 54% of the general fund budget has been received 50% of the way through the year. 2019 revenues are slightly below what they were this time in 2018, and I think, looking over everything, this is mainly due to less commercial building activity than there was year-to-date in 2018. And another highlight, a couple more on page four, for the Culture and Recreation Fund, revenues are 42% received, 50% of the way through the year. And then Parks and Recreation, 42% expended with 42% of budgeted revenues received. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Emily, thanks to you and your team. Who, I'm sorry?
Oh, the only question, could you explain again that Woodland Aquatic Center, where we are on receipt and expenditure? There's a negative number there. It's on page four, I'm sorry.
A negative number? I'm not sure.
Yeah, under revenue.
I was reading the highlights related to the revenues and expenditures. Is that...
Are you referring to the 18,000?
Yeah.
Inference. Yes, Harvey's asking.
Yeah. Oh, so that's actually showing a decrease in revenues, and I'm not exactly sure, you know, what that would be. It's a 9% decrease over 2018 year-to-date. You know, I don't know if there's been less rental activity or...
Yep.
I can kind of weigh in a little. I can kind of weigh in a little bit. Cindy's not here tonight, but had this discussion, and so part of that was, we've had a transition, we've had some transition in leadership in the aquatic center. I'll tell you, though, we have been upping the marketing, as you saw earlier, to address the issue. But I'll tell you, we have renewed leadership in the aquatic center now with the new aquatics manager. We're still in the hiring process for the deputy, but I would contribute a lot of that to that transition. There was, to a degree, I'd say there is to a degree some hesitancy to make changes until after the first year of operations had been in effect to see...to basically establish a baseline. But I'll tell you right now, I think there's...I've got a lot of different programs that are being discussed and ready for implementation to include some new exercise programs as well as concessions that would be actually initiated by the city versus kind of where it's been for the last year, just machines that have been there.
It just reinforces a point I think all of us have made since the aquatic center opened, is that it'll take us a couple of years to figure out what the O&amp;M is going to be over time, and we're not there yet, which to me says there are a lot of, you know, wishlist items that we may have that we need to figure out first, just how much it is going to cost to run that center.
Yeah, I think we're just in the initial phase also, just really just getting the awareness out. We didn't...as you know, as Karen talked about, we put some wayfinding signs right there on...right off of 24 and in on Baldwin, and it surprised people, 20% that came in said, "Hey, I didn't even know this facility existed," right? And so, that's a surprise when it's one of the top aquatic facilities in the region and people don't even know it's here. And so, we know we have to do more and more to get better awareness of the program. But I'll tell you, the summer, you know, I think some of you were actually in the facility when we thought we were at...I thought we were at max capacity. So, there's been some good times this summer in terms of occupancy in the facility, and I think it's just going to grow as we continue to push these marketing initiatives to include that. These numbers are really before even we...before we even got the rack cards out, before we got the videos out, so this is just kind of building right now.
So, these rack cards will go all over the front range?
Correct, even down to the Colorado Springs Visitor Center, down in there as well, so that they're aware of it.
And when you look at that $18,000 number on page four, on the top of page five, it breaks it out, line item by line item, so you can see what's...how things are doing.
Thank you.
Emily, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for yours. You waited two hours, two and a half hours. All right, council, nothing else on the agenda? I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move to go into executive session.
Anne?
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Car?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here.